We're doing this from an economic development point of view. So my center, the other centers of innovation, our whole goal is to just grow our industries in the state. So we're always open to working with any of the local communities, in my case aerospace and aviation, to help grow that business, even if you have stuff at the airport that doesn't involve you. And you need help, we're here to help you.
Brian, if you would tell Randy that I invited Joe Lane because I wanted to make sure at least somebody was here so we wouldn't make this like it's a private meeting.
He's from all the coastal cities that have been very, very involved. He asked him to attend, sit here and listen. So everybody was there.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Let me give you a call.
Yeah.
Randy thought that was a very good thing.
Like I said, anytime anything comes up that's non-UAV related, you guys need help on it, call and let me know.
So, like I said, just...
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I have a question. Do you want to stay here now?
It's quiet, yeah.
Yes. Hey.
It normally takes twenty-five minutes to get here, so if you can rest...
Commissioner Randy Bell.
Hi.
Mr. Bell, so you know, that recorder on the positive is running. That is a dedicated recorder. He already, I do not have a recorder running. He started to say his name on the record. They did call David Clark and David said it was as long as we agreed, as long as it was agreed, it was public. So if you agree to that being recorded. I don't know why the liaison board is talking about, I hope I'm doing it right.
Are you gonna Mirandaize me?
Yes. Where's your laptop?
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry.
Well, I want to, see, you've heard a lot of the in conversation that I had there. I'll go back to, I'll start at the beginning, kind of lay out how we got to where we are today. Back in 2009, we pulled together a group from industry to get together and say, what's the next big thing that's coming in aviation and aerospace? What should we, instead of Georgia, be looking forward to? And in my center, the Center of Innovation for Aerospace, what we do is that we are not a recruitment arm like the rest of the Department of Economic Development. They go out and invite companies, come into all this stuff. We're really what I call the service after the sale. We work with companies that are already here in the state. We go to them and say, well, what's keeping you from growing? What are the things that we need to do in the state to make you successful so you create more jobs? And that's it in my job. So part of that is to look out there and see what's coming, what trends are coming, and what we as a state need to prepare ourselves for so we can be on the leading edge of this. So in December 2009, we had this meeting and they said unmanned aerial systems, or unmanned aerial vehicles, I'll use the term interchangeably, excuse me, but the next big thing...
We call them drones.
Yeah, we kind of hate that on our side just because it doesn't really get across what it is. We call them UAV or US. But, and so we issued that report in April of 2010. And in my group, we started a unmanned aerial systems working group in the state committee. Has the university system people on it, my folks on it, other parts of state government, G-DOT, companies from the industry side, FAA, National Guard, whoever has interest in this. And to talk about where do we want to go as a state in terms of preparing for this. So we started this back in 2010. And since that time, we've been funding a series of projects in the state through the universities to develop UAV technology so that Georgia would be on the leading edge of this. In the midst of all this, the FAA was directed by Congress, your familiar with that, in latest January 2015, 2012, and said, hey FAA, you will issue rules to allow the civilian use of UAVs in the national airspace by September 2015. And oh, by the way, to help you do that, you're going to have six designated test sites throughout the United States to help gather information and do this. So Georgia, we raised our hand and said, ooh, we would like to be one of those, along with forty-seven other states. So it's a crowded field.
Okay. Since you brought that up, can I ask you, why legislation that restricts warrantless surveillance eliminates states from the competition?
It doesn't necessarily eliminate them from the competition. FAA hasn't said that. Well, Mike has a belief that that would, but FAA has not made a determination on that.
Okay.
FAA simply is asking, do you have any rules or regulations or laws in your state that restrict the use of UAVs? I don't think that's true because that's not what we're going to be doing with these things. So why would it restrict the testing?
That's probably my question.
Yeah. Yeah. It really is a moot, to me, my personal opinion, is a moot point on that. So we have thrown our hat in the ring. We've developed, we've put together a proposal, I think our last part of the proposal goes in in May, to be one of these test sites. The main reason that we've asked to be one of those test sites is that, from my experience with the FAA and in business, I would rather be on the inside helping to write the rules than be on the outside watching them be written. As a state, we want to make sure we're influencing the direction this is going, to make sure that the rules are written in a way that reflects what we want to happen as a state for various reasons, and that we have a good marketplace. We don't want the rules to be so restrictive that you just can't have a commercial marketplace with any things. But you don't want them so wide that they can be abused. And our goal is to be a leader in this. Plus, the FAA has made very clear on this that there's no money involved with this. This is not a contract that the FAA will give. It is an agreement to share data. So it's actually done through, through an actual agreement, not a contract.
Okay. Why would QNET get involved?
Well, they're part of our team. So I'll explain how the team works. So the, so right now, only public entities can fly UAVs in the United States. That means federal governments, state governments, local governments, all those things. The FAA restricted that six test sites to public entities. So our team is Georgia Tech and Middle Georgia College, Middle Georgia State College, public entities, part of the university system. They're the leaders of this team. My center is a member of the team. We're a public entity, part of the Department of Economic Development. And then we invited four local industry companies to be a part of our team because they have the knowledge and the technology that we can apply to this. All the flying done now in the state and under this test program will be done by the universities. The UAVs must be owned or leased by the universities, operated by the universities, and they have complete and utter control of these vehicles. The public entity, in this case, the university, is responsible for the airworthiness of the vehicle, the safety of the vehicle, the liability, everything associated with it. Companies will not be operating these vehicles. They are part of the team, helping provide their expertise, but the public entity is in charge on this.
Again, does the university compensate these companies if they're part of the team?
No.
They do it?
Well, it depends on a case-by-case basis. Some cases, the company participates because they simply want to get information. In some cases, we may need a certain capability of a company and might have to purchase that. Right now, most of it is that companies are involved simply because they want the experience, they want the information too. This is an opportunity for them to help grow their expertise.
Okay.
Can you play him though?
Yeah. Yeah, he knows all that. So under this, if we get the designation, we'll be doing a testing to help figure out how do you integrate these vehicles into the national airspace.
Right.
That's the FAA's goal. Our goal is to position Georgia to be a leader in this and to help our companies in our state be right there, knowing how to do this, how to operate these things, how to make dollars with these things, create jobs right when the FAA issues these rules. So our goal is to make our companies the leaders in making these things and operating them. We see two areas that are going to be the first adopters for this technology. Agriculture, which I think is a real big one, and public safety. We have a project we're kicking off this spring. We already have a COA from the FAA for this. Then in Mulholland, we're going to be flying small helicopter UAVs, sitting on this desk here, over peanut and cotton fields. And we're going to provide an imagery there, the test fields for the University of Georgia down there. So there's Middle Georgia State College, University of Georgia, Guided Systems Technologies, one of the industry companies, and a couple other folks, the Peanut Commission and the Cotton Commission, all chipping in on this. And the farmers say if we can provide them this imagery on a every other week basis, they can look at it and say, oh, okay, I can, too much watering there, too little there, ooh, I got infestation there, all that stuff. And they say it's going to help them. So first goal of this is to figure out, does this imagery really do what the farmers think it will do? The second part of the project is to say, okay, can we operate this vehicle in a way, and that's why we have a company involved, operate this vehicle at a cost that we can provide the imagery to the farmers at a price they're willing to pay? And that's the other part. Is there, is there a market here? Or do we have a mismatch? So it's a two-pronged approach. The technology, does it work? But does it have a real commercial application within hospitable? So we're doing that, and that's under an FAA. COA is where we're doing that. We'll do it through the whole growing season. And that's the kind of stuff that we're going to be doing under this testing consortium. We have seven sites that we hope to use in Georgia. We have our Eastman, Georgia site at the Middle Georgia State College. That's our main hub site. That's where we'll be doing airworthiness testing. When we have a brand-new UAV, we'll take it down there to test and make sure it flies the way it's supposed to, the data link works the way it's supposed to, it's all the requirements that we've set for, and make sure it's safe to fly. It's apparently an unpopulated area. We have all our maintenance facilities there. We have chase aircraft, we have chase helicopters. We have all the things we need there to do this airworthiness testing. And once you've done that, you need to go out and test these vehicles in an operational environment. So we have our agriculture sites, Mulholland, Tipton, Fort Valley State, and we're hoping L.J. for agriculture and forestry are primary uses there for DNR. How do you look at the trees? Can you tell anything with multispectral? Can you see the health of trees? Can you do these sorts of things? Plus, from here, the mountainous terrain, flying down in the coastal plain is one thing. Flying in the mountains is a whole different thing. Data link operates differently. Are we going to lose it when we fly over the line of sight and those things? There's different issues with flying in the mountains. We want to test that. For public safety, we have three different sites. Perry, Georgia, at Guardian Systems, at AIM, down in Lakeland. And then, if you follow, just overlying, Alabama. Those are mock cities. The FAA will not allow us to fly these things in real cities at this point, which I think is very prudent. So these are essentially mock cities, mock urban environments, where we can test these vehicles for public safety. And have public safety folks involved with the testing, does it really help you very much? What are the limitations of it? How do we maintain separation from buildings and people? What's the reliability of these things? To figure out, how do you safely use these in the public safety environment? And so what we're trying to do with the FAA, show them that we have a good capability with multiple sites across the state to be able to accommodate this kind of testing. Because, of course, they're not giving us any money. So the FAA designation is really more like a good housekeeping seal of approval, where the FAA said, hey, these guys are doing the right things, they have the right infrastructure, we like them, you should go and test with them. And we're hoping then companies will come flock to Georgia to do that, to set up shop for the long term, hopefully, build facilities and things like that. And then that's really what we're in, we're in it for is the economic development aspect. This whole project is all about the civilian use of UAVs. There's not a military component to it. The FAA has made it very clear they don't care about that. The military has their airspace they can test in. They have Fort Stewart, they have Fort Benning, they have...
Military ones they can fly, you've been telling people with them for forty years.
Well, they fly in their airspace. They actually, FAA didn't allow them to fly in the national airspace either. Because there are planes in the national airspace. So a lot of our testing is just going to be, how do you use these things? How do you fly them safely? How do you maintain separation between manned aircraft and unmanned aircraft? That's the big deal. So we hope to participate and not be a part of that with the FAA. And we're, we're talking to communities and getting letters of agreement with the communities to be able to use their airports and a couple, two or three airports we've been talking to, not all places are using airports. And Mulholland, we don't need an airport, we're just flying out of the field, out of the back of the truck, things like that. For a couple of reasons. Number one, because some of the fixed wing stuff, you do need a surface to fly from. Number two, because one of the problems is, is that how do you mix traffic? We're going to have to figure out how you operate from airports. Right now, it's going to be thou shalt not mix the traffic, can't be any manned traffic around, we're going to do our thing. FAA has made it very clear, if we're flying an unmanned vehicle in an airport environment, when manned aircraft shows up, you land, you get out of the way, you don't interfere with the manned operations at all. Man operations always have precedence. But as we reach that day, three years from now, we're going to be doing some controlled testing of how do you mix manned and unmanned traffic. Most of that will be in the eastern area because we have the control tower down there, operated by the college. We have most of the traffic there is college airplanes, all those things. So we have a very nice controlled environment for that. But we're trying to have multiple sites so that when companies come to us and they say we want to test certain kinds of technology, we hook them up with the university, the university takes the lead on developing that technology then, and then we have multiple sites we can fly at. And it's not a blanket approval. I think all the communities have said, we don't want to just give you blanket approvals and we want an understanding.
Hell, since you brought that up, we did send a conditional letter of interest.
Yeah.
And a gentleman in the conversation told me we probably wouldn't get a written response when you get a verbal response. Why is that? Why would we not get a written response?
A response saying thank you or just...
Well, you know, a proposed contract, a copy of the contract is what we're looking for.
Okay. The letters are simply to say, are you interested? We'll follow up then with putting together a memorandum of understanding or agreement between, and at this point, I don't think anyone up here has said they're ready to do that step. We have, we've done that step with other communities.
Well, we sent a county attorney draft a letter saying that we express some conditional support, that we would like to see what we're getting into.
Right.
And that's for documentation. And as far as I know, we've received nothing in return.
Yeah. Okay. Maybe we misunderstood. I was under the impression, I kind of, we put on a hold, I think we had an email from the chairman saying that we wanted to have more discussion on that before we went to that next step. So my impression, you weren't ready for that next step, to actually put the MOA in place. But if you want to do...
Not put it in place, to see what it is, what's in it.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to see what's in it. See, one thing that I put, you guys have a disagreement with me, is the way this thing was handed to us. You know, it was presented to the Airport Advisory Board, not the Board of Commissioners. Which is an internal structural problem here. That's not your fault. I just found out this morning, there was a sample, a contract from Tipton. I've never received that. I got this from a private citizen two days ago. It's from Robert McCarry. You know, we're kind of, I'm getting left out of the loop on this, and that's what bothers me.
Well, I've never seen any kind of contract when...
Well, whatever you're holding right there.
Well, that's a sample of a certificate of authorization.
And that's different.
From the FAA.
And that's different.
Yeah.
The way the process works is that a public entity, be it university, your local police department, whatever, goes to the FAA and asks for a certificate of authorization to fly a UAV. And you go through that process, and it's for a specific vehicle, for a specific period of time, a specific location, launch site, and specific airspace. And so that's the federal agreement to fly the vehicle. And then for what we've been doing for the local communities, if we use an airport, we've started with the airport commission because in many communities, the airport commission is actually an independent body, independent of the county commissioner. Now, well, I understand here, so that's not the case. But in a lot of communities, it is an independent body, as set up by state legislation.
Well, and that's not your fault, that's our fault.
Yeah. So we go to the airport commission, because we start there, because they're the operators of the airport. And we say, hey, we would like to fly from your airport, so we'd like to see if you're interested in doing this. If you are, then we can put together a memorandum of understanding and simply say that there is this interest in doing this. And then on a case-by-case basis, for each specific test, we go back to that airport commission or whatever body, in this case is... So for every test, we go back and they lay out their specific requirements. They say, yeah, we don't mind you flying that particular vehicle here, here's our requirements that you have to meet to do that, and we agree to that. Sometimes they say, no, we don't want you to do that particular test here now, okay? Good. We'll go fly somewhere else. But we do that on a case-by-case basis.
I want to ask a question. If you were me, would you vote to approve a memorandum of understanding that you have not seen?
Oh, no.
Well, I haven't seen one.
Yeah. No, we haven't, we haven't put one together yet for this, for this site. So you have nothing to vote on?
Right.
Yeah. Totally agree with that. Like, we were in the impression that we were on hold with you guys, and so we...
Until we get more information.
We took that seriously.
On that, in this email, it says that the flights and uses are fully compliant with FAA and FCC privacy and policy regulations. Is that, that's right?
Well, FAA does not have any privacy regulations.
Right. And then it says, we'll conduct all operations in accordance with Gilmore County Airport rules and regulations with respect to the privacy rights of all residents in the county. Gilmore County Airport doesn't have any either, so why was this even written?
Dunno. He doesn't speak for the state of Georgia.
Okay.
Who is this email phone ring?
Mike Kennedy. Mike Kennedy.
I...
Yeah. Mike Kennedy does not speak for the state of Georgia, does not speak for my center. I can't be more clear than that.
Okay. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
No.
I don't want to interrupt. All of a sudden, I got in the... What was that question? Because he was very adamant in his answer side of the table. What would you...
I asked why those lines were put in this email.
What do you mean?
That they would comply with FCC and FAA regulations with regard to privacy.
What's the email?
It's about, the Channel Five got ahold of this and they're trying to give us talking points.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt your time to support them.
Yeah.
I apologize for that.
Yeah, we're good.
You were just, you were just adamant about your answer, but I was worried we'd hear that.
But Mike Kennedy that presented everything. I mean, you're now saying that he doesn't speak for...
Well, he is speaking for his own company.
But he said...
But he does not represent the state of Georgia.
He said, his company isn't running this, which we would like to believe it was.
His company is not running this.
So who is running it?
The University of Georgia Tech, Middle Georgia State College, and the Center of Innovation for Aerospace, all state entities.
What rule...
His company, we've invited this company to be a member of the consortium to share information, but they are not, remember, it's a public entities are the only ones that can fly UAVs. He is not a public entity.
So, so the consultant...
There may be a misunderstanding, he may have misspoken, but he cannot fly, he cannot, or any private company cannot fly UAVs. They cannot operate a test site for the FAA. They cannot do anything under this testing consortium.
Okay, this, this email supposedly is from Robert McGrath, who's director of Georgia Tech Research Institute?
Yeah, he was passing on some information, I guess.
But I want to be clear, I'm not trying to create a hostile environment. I'm actually trying to get some answers to some questions that I've had that nobody's been able to answer for.
Okay. Okay. What's the question? I mean, essentially, we operate under FAA rules.
Right.
And any other restrictions that are negotiated between us.
Okay, one of the big concerns in the community out there, when I walk out that door, that I'm going to get hit with, is people don't want drones spying on them in their hot tubs. Okay?
Yeah.
I know that, that's, I think...
Right.
You don't have to fly to Gilmore County to spy on people in their hot tubs, you can probably go online and do that, but, you know, how do we answer that concern?
Well, under the COAs, we have a very specific purpose. These are research and development.
What is a COA?
COA is the Certificate of Authorization for the FAA.
Okay. I haven't seen one.
These are, these are from the FAA. They lay out very specifically what vehicle you're going to fly, when you're going to fly it, where you're going to fly it, and what you're doing with the vehicle. And this is for research and development purposes.
Right.
So we have to tell them exactly what we're doing, what kind of sensors we have on the vehicles, what we're looking at, what's the purpose of that.
At what point will we see one of those certificates of authorization?
We could probably show you one of the ones we already have in place for some other locations.
Okay, yeah, I'd agree with that. I'd just like to get some information. I mean, I got the public feeding and stuff.
Yeah. Because FAA controls the airspace, so...
You know, the bullet point, Mike Kennedy, it was from QNET, said that the twenty-three states have been eliminated because, and I called him and said, why?
That's not, that's not true.
I'm just telling you, I called him and I said, well, why? And he said, because they've restricted warrantless surveillance.
And we're not, to me personally, I don't think that's a restriction because we're not doing that kind of testing.
Well, you might think you could handle on Mr. Kennedy.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah. He's creating a lot more questions than he's been answering.
That's why I'm here.
To me.
That's why I'm here.
What is the consultant role? Does he work for Georgia Tech or do you see...
He owns the UFAL site.
So he owns what?
The UFAL site.
The UFAL?
He, he has one of the mock cities. So we're going to use his site for public safety testing.
Okay. Well, then I have, I have another question. Why, why was the consultant the lead person to make contact with us? I mean, I didn't know new consultants from a man in the moon. And represented themselves as the representative or the consultant?
I would say that would have been a breakdown in communication internally to our proposals. And once I became aware of it, I said, folks, I'm the person for the state that should be speaking on these things, and speaking to the local. I had been doing that with all the other communities. And I said, you should, you should pull out and let me do that because I'm the one that has that responsibility. And I'm the one, and frankly, I'm the one that has the visibility. Not all members of the team have that statewide fifty thousand-foot view of what we're doing. And I've been involved from day one on this, so...
If you were me, how would you address privacy concerns?
In this way. I've been speaking with lawyers in Washington and with various, with the FAA and various organizations I belong to. If you can't do it with a manned aircraft, you can't do it with an unmanned aircraft. The laws don't differentiate. The laws simply say, with an aircraft, you can't do these things. The FAA simply says that UAV is a different class of aircraft. So if you can't take a picture of certain kinds of activities and use it in the court of law with an aircraft, you can't do it with a UAV.
But the FAA has no restrictions on what you can do in an manned aircraft?
FAA does not. Other law is there, other case laws there for, and it applies equally. So in other words, if you can't do it with a manned aircraft, you can't do it with an unmanned aircraft.
Right.
That's the way it works today.
But if you can do it with a manned aircraft, then you can do it with a UAV?
If you have authorization to fly from the FAA under the COA and no public safety folks have those authorizations in state or state.
Right. Well, I'm not talking to public safety.
Yeah. So, I mean, that, that's, that's really it. There's nothing you can do with a UAV if you can't do it with an manned aircraft.
So, I mean, the way I, I might be wrong, help me if I am, but the way I'm interpreting that is there are virtually no privacy restrictions or assurances.
Beyond what we do with manned aircraft now. There's not any specific to UAVs.
And, and there aren't any, basically, for all intents and purposes, because these companies will fly around, take a picture of your house, and then knock on your door and sell it to you.
Yeah. Yeah. And those issues will have to be addressed at the federal level.
Right.
And the FAA had a conference call two or three weeks ago now to talk about privacy issues. And that's one of the things.
April third.
Yeah, that's one of the things that will be a big concern during this three to five year period of this program.
It's a very big concern right now.
Well, that's one of the reasons why I, I think Georgia should be part of the, one of the designated test sites. I would rather be in the, in the middle of that, helping to write those rules.
I, I can be that part, too.
I mean, there's going to be lots of things that we have to figure out over the next three years or five years, or three years if they're on schedule. And I'd much rather be in the middle of it and have seat at the table.
Okay?
That's it. So, we'd love you guys to be a part of it, but even if you don't participate at this point, we're continuing forward with our activities. And a year from now, two years from now, we say, we'd like to reengage and see what's going on. We'll be there.
Okay, well, I can only speak for myself. I can't speak for the others. But, I'd like to see something on paper. What are we talking about? You know, the first question I said to ask, you know, when they presented this to us, how many days are we talking about? I got, well, we don't know. Over what length of time? We don't know. I mean, how can you, how can you?
I'll verbally answer some of your questions. We're looking at, it's a three-year program. So, we're looking at a three-year agreement with the localities. There is an exit clause, and then they kind of, either party can exit the agreement. We anticipate that, especially at this site.
Can you give us a copy of that agreement?
Yeah. I can get you one of the ones we've done with somebody else.
Yeah, please.
The Eastman and some of the, the airport authority there. Up here, I anticipate, I'd be shocked if we flew more than fifteen days a year. Simply because, you know, it is testing. We'd come, you'll have a burst of activity, come up fly for two or three days. Everybody would go away, working on the data, stuff like that. Come back fly for another two or three days. You'd see bursts of activity. That's, that's the way these projects have worked up to this point. We have a two or three day window, then months, and a two or three day window, then months. So, it's not a huge amount of activity.
Right. It's not making money.
Uh, not at this point. That's what I, I'm very careful with local communities that, for this first three-year period especially, this is not a moneymaker.
Right.
We're absolutely in the investment mode in the state of Georgia at this point. We're just trying to figure this thing out and see what, what the business model is.
Yeah, it's in technology and that.
And, and we have AUVSI and other folks that have done economic estimates of what it'll be downstream. But, it's like looking at a crystal ball.
Right.
We, again, we don't know what the rules are. So, I never want to, to overemphasize the economics, the near-term economic impact anybody. It's really, it's, for, for you at the local side, it's just really getting knowledge of how these things operate. How's it going on? How do they operate at my airport? Or is it the issues I have to worry about as a local community for this? Is this, you know, is this something of business I'm thinking we're going to want to pursue in the future? Or is it something, no, we're not really, is this going, we'll just let it alone?
You just gave me an idea. Would y'all be interested in buying our airport?
Given our state budget at this point, probably not. Probably not.
Will the letter of agreement spell out the liability coverage by Georgia Tech?
Yes, they asked you.
And most government entities and public entities have a maximum liability responsibility. I mean, if you try to sue the city of Atlanta or whatever, I mean, you know, it is so little that if a person gets killed, the maximum they can get is some kittens. And what's the liability coverage that they would offer?
Uh, not being a lawyer, I really can't answer that question, so.
I mean, what, I mean, seriously, my biggest concern besides all of the privacy issues, and when you say that the unmanned can do what the manned can do, the manned just can have all kinds of cameras and heat-seeking things and sewer and all this other stuff. That wasn't really a comforting answer. But, the liability part, I mean, this is forest, like you said. And right now, we've had a lot of rain, but normally in the summer, it's very dry. And if one of those goes down and starts a forest fire, I mean, the liability could be enormous. And we need to make sure that Georgia Tech is providing that kind of coverage. I mean, that area, all those houses are wood log. I mean, you could, Cusawati could move, you know, five hundred houses pretty quick.
To my mind, that's kind of a very improbable scenario. Mainly because with these kinds of UAVs, they're very small. They carry a very, even if they're gas-powered, it's a very, very small fuel box involved these things. A lot of these are electric. That's the direction we want to go with these things, because of community noise, because of safety issues, all those things. So, with the electrics, you'd very much have a much reduced risk of anything occurring. And again, you look at it in relationship to manned aircraft. We're talking about vehicles that would weigh a factor of ten less than a manned vehicle usually. So, their, their impact when they, they, if they do crash is much, much reduced than a manned aircraft. It's much more likely because of the size of the manned vehicle and the numbers of vehicles we're talking about for manned vehicles that a manned aircraft would, would cause an incident like you're talking about versus a UAV.
But I was going to embarrass that. I mean, it only takes a spark. I mean, a guy was burning crack out here, and a little piece of, you wouldn't allow the burn boxes, the burners and boxes. And it burnt twenty-eight, it was right here near the fire station before they could get it under control. Because between our winds and our drive force, these are pine forests. I mean, it doesn't take but one cigarette.
No, you didn't want to say that that was what the recorder was doing? You just called him a guy. Well, say it was a mayor.
That's probably a good idea.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, and, but, again, that's, that's, that's all issues we have to deal with. And, and things we have to figure out, what's the crash worth? And is these vehicles going to be, will the FAA put special requirements for the fuel cells? Crash-worthy fuel cells on these vehicles? They don't require that in general aviation aircraft today. Will that be a requirement for the unmanned vehicles? These are all issues, but from a, from a state perspective, I look and I say, this is, the reality is coming to us. There will be UAVs flying in the national airspace. Like, I mean, Congress has said, go do it. We're simply trying to get ready for it.
But I have a question, because you were talking about that the FAA has certain requirements for manned and unmanned vehicles, that they can't do what a manned flight can, can't do.
Right.
But then what you said, that the FAA can't do what, with an unmanned UAV, that they can't do without authority of, in a manned aircraft? So, such as taking pictures?
Oh, lost you there, but yeah.
Okay.
Essentially, if, if you can do it, if you can't do it in a manned aircraft, you can't do it in an unmanned.
Okay. But you just told us we don't own the airspace above us, right?
That's under federal, that's under federal jurisdiction.
Right, okay. So, here's where the connection happens, is that EPA doesn't allow through UN resolution with manned flights. So, you, with, with this, that, your statement is inaccurate. It's misleading, to say the least.
Not meant to be, and I don't believe it is.
Well, I, I mean?
Under federal guidelines.
But with the UN resolution with the EPA, which?
Last time I checked, the UN wasn't the sovereign government of the United States.
Well, they're acting like.
But under federal guidelines.
Under federal guidelines, it, it is allowed. And it, I have to get the actual?
Yeah, you can go up on Cessna one seventy-two. You can, as long as you're above five hundred feet, because you can't blow, can't be below five hundred feet ABL, unless you're landing or taking off. You can't buzz somebody's, above five hundred feet, and you could have a video camera hanging out the window of the airplane and take pictures.
And what altitude do these things fly?
These things can fly, well, pretty much any altitude. The FAA has not laid the rules down yet. That's why we have the COAs, which, which very definitely define, here is the bubble of airspace you can fly in. And based upon the kind of testing you're doing, they may say, you have to be above a certain altitude and below a certain altitude. That, that COA very definitely defines the altitudes you can fly at and the geographic space you can fly in.
Right.
It's very, and it's only as much as you need to do the test.
But the EPA can do it, not only the area where it is at, where they are?
Well, I, I don't know if EPA does, but I know for, for us, for what we're doing, the FAA defines this, and we can't do anything by that.
But they are, they're not a department of the interior. Through this, the FAA will be, through the Department of Interior.
I can't speak to that.
And I'm going to love.
I just know what, what rules we live under.
I, I hate to say something far beyond the meaning you reject, but?
It's a meeting.
But, that's right. He has, he has a twelve o'clock lunch at once, and I didn't want to finish the bill, but I don't mean to let you play.
Yeah, but.
I, I don't have any last questions, except I would like to?
We will get you a draft MOU.
Yeah, because I can't in good conscience say, yeah, I'm all for this, and they say, well, what did you give vote for? I don't know.
No, and, and like I said, I guess that's a misunderstanding on our part, that we were, felt like you wanted us to hold until we had more conversations. But I'll get you a, a copy of one of the ones we've done with another community.
Okay.
And then we can modify it from there. And like I said, you know, stay in touch, what my center does, it's not just UAVs. I mean, anything to do with your airport or aerospace, you have an aerospace company or any kind of aviation activity, we can help with up here. Give us, give us a call.
You can buy it?
Well, that, that I can't do. That would give me that much budget. Not even close to that much budget.
Could be justice, you're going to the rotary lunch now?
Yeah.